We're going to get started. I'd like to call this meeting of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Please be seated. Jared, please take your role.
Mr. Bickowski.
Here.
Mr. Bonerotti. Mr. Embrasia.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatolos.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
I'm glad he wanted to.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
As of right now, we have 12 members present.
We'll now have proclamation slash certificates, 13462-25.
A proclamation recognizing Allegheny County Emergency Services, sponsored by Council Members Katina Nakarati-Chapkus and all members of council.
So it is my distinct honor to be able to present this proclamation this evening to the fine individuals who make up our emergency services department within the county. And some of you may not understand or have knowledge of the breadth of services that this wonderful team provides. So I hope that when I'm done reading the proclamation, you'll just give a little bit of insight to each of the roles that you all oversee. So this is a proclamation recognizing Allegheny County Emergency Services. Whereas Allegheny County Emergency Services, Aces, recently earned the distinct recognition from the United States Secret Service for their outstanding assistance and support on behalf of the investigative and protective responsibilities of the U.S. Secret Service. And whereas the department's dedication and hard work during last year's election cycle, coordinating 22 presidential visits, including vice presidential and former presidential visits, did not go unnoticed as Aces was instrumental in making sure operations ran exceptionally well during each visit. And whereas the entire emergency management staff activate the Emergency Operations Center, EOC, to make sure that every visit went smooth and without interruption, from landing at Pittsburgh International Airport or Allegheny County Airport to the final takeoff. And whereas each movement a president or dignitary makes is tracked by employees in the EOC, and this includes stops that are not known. Working closely with the Secret Service Communications Unit, Aces supplies aerial footage using the department's Photokite drone. This provides the Secret Service a view of the locations prior to and during a visit. This live footage is also shared via the virtual EOC for those in the field. And whereas, along with the Allegheny County Hazmat Team, a decontamination team, DECON, was stationed at the Allegheny County Airport Fire Department to ensure that each visit was handled without incident and ready to respond if something catastrophic would occur. Whereas presidential visits bring a lot of attention to our area, as we have learned with the recent assassination attempt, not only is the DECON team helping to protect the president, but they are also helping to ensure that the public is safe from all hazards. And whereas, as an integral part of the operation, Chief Brown was the main contact for the Secret Service for all visits to Allegheny County, some visits with only a day's notice, with a few of them occurring on holidays. Despite days' notice, Aces maintained outstanding assistance during each one of those visits. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Allegheny County Council President Patrick Katina, myself and all members of council do hereby congratulate Allegheny County Emergency Services for earning this distinct recognition from the United States Secret Service. We thank the department for their service, exceptional contributions to the community, and for their unwavering commitment to protecting the citizens of Allegheny County. Congratulations. Would you like to share?
Absolutely. Please.
Thank you, members of council. Speaking on my behalf, and certainly Stephen Berliner, our Assistant Chief, Rick Calella, who's our Hazardous Materials Response Coordinator, all of the work, all of the employees of Allegheny County Emergency Services, the 911 Center, the Fire Marshal's Office, the Emergency Management Agency, and our Fire Training Academy, when we're tasked with these planned or unplanned events, we all come together as a team to support each other, to make sure that we're bringing the greatest public safety to whatever the event is. Certainly, the challenges of 22 visits last year really pressed us, but it just builds our team stronger. I think unlike anything else that we usually do, it's very reflective of the fact that politics is not involved in our line of work. We represent the public safety for all, regardless of the scenario, but I think also, given the circumstances of presidential and previous presidential visits, the stakes are quite higher, and we want to make sure that nothing is going wrong under our watch. So I'm very proud to accept this on behalf of the entire Allegheny County Department of Emergency Services, as well as many, many of our regional partners, City of Pittsburgh bureaus, our Hazardous Materials Response Team, who are all volunteer, by the way, as well as our regional partners and our airport partners who've assisted with every one of these visits. Unfortunately, there'll be another year, plenty more of these to go on, but we learn from each one of them. We work well as a team with the Secret Service and look forward to doing that again in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to get pictures. Okay.
Mike Snow in here. Pretty freezing out here.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you. Okay. All right, everybody, ready? Okay, one, two, three. Let me get one more. Ready, one, two, three. Gotcha.
Sarah.
Yeah.
Sarah.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Oh, my.
Oh.
Okay, all right, ready? All right, one, two, three. Got it.
Thank you.
Congratulations, chief.
Thanks.
He's okay.
He's okay.
13482-25, we're going to skip over for right now. 13483-25.
Before proceeding, please let the record reflect that Ms. Pritzio is now present via telephone. 13483-25 is a proclamation proclaiming April 2025 is Child Abuse Prevention Month in Allegheny County, sponsored by Council Member Nakarati-Chapkus and all other members of council.
So this is a proclamation recognizing something very important to all of us across community, and that's Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Allegheny County. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims. And whereas protective factors or conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that build strong children and families as prevention remains the best defense. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to and promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Allegheny County Council, and all members of council, sorry, a little typo there, do hereby proclaim April 2025 is Child Abuse Prevention Month in Allegheny County, and we urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this proclamation, and thank you to all council members and everyone attending today. My name is Joanne Wodkowski-Smith. I've been a child abuse prevention advocate, legal advocate, CASA, child welfare worker, rape and domestic violence counselor. I've been doing this work for 30 years. I still get a little bit nervous. I know some of you from community work, but I speak today not as a county employee, but as a survivor of child sexual abuse myself. It's hard for children to disclose that something horrible has happened to them. It can be hard to recognize child abuse. It can be hard to measure the impact of prevention. You know, I've changed positions so many times because I wanted to reach the children before they came to this criminal courthouse, or across the street to dependency court before the abuse happened. My abuse started when I was four years old. It lasted until I was 12, and I ran away to escape the abuse. And I was trying to prevent becoming part of the foster system, and I found myself in even more danger. Couch hopping, sleeping on couches, sleeping in cars. It was just horrific. I was born in North Braddock. We moved to Pema Tumming when I was four, and then I found my way back to Pittsburgh later on, about when I was 19. But the social service system helped save my life because I wanted to commit suicide many times, and I'll never give up speaking on behalf of other children. I'm getting older. I have two beautiful children that are grown, and they're healthy and safe and happy. And I remember I was told, due to the abuse I endured, that I may never have children because of the medical impact of the sexual abuse. So I have my children, and now I'm a grandma. I'm getting old, and soon I'm going to retire. And my grandbabies and my children are healthy and happy and safe and secure and nurtured and loved, but not every child has that opportunity. And so I thank you for your work to pass the budget, to enhance, so that, you know, our human services and child welfare and all of our providers and systems can keep working, because this is for all of our children in every one of your districts. And those of you that have children and grandchildren, or nieces and nephews, or anyone that you love, we're all impacted, and we need to create a legacy of prevention and awareness and make sure that we have the services for those in need. I am deeply compassionate, and every time we lose a child, it's not a family, just a family losing that baby that was shaken, violently shaken, because in a moment of rage, and they have traumatic brain injury and they lost their life, or a child who commits suicide, or a youth who is running away like I did and finding themselves in more danger in their downtown and they're utilizing drugs or alcohol to cope with the pain and the trauma. No one wakes up one day and says, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to use drugs today. I'm going to shoot up heroin. And we've lost children. I've lost many through my career, and everyone. We look at how we could have prevented it, and I encourage you to look at statistics for near fatalities and child fatalities in our state and in your districts and in our areas. And I'm very proud of our county and all the systems and providers and mental health providers. We don't have enough resources. We don't have enough mental health beds and psychiatric units, or we just need to do better, and we have to make sure that we're allocating the funds appropriately, but it starts in your community. 30 years ago, I started running youth groups, sports groups. Every time I had an Easter egg hunt or trolley ride with Santa, I brought McGruff the dog. You use every opportunity to raise awareness, to prevent any type of harm, whether it's intentional child abuse, accidental drowning. Every loss is tragic, but it can't, we can't be responsive and reactive. We have to be proactive. So please, thank you again. Sorry it took so long, but I'm very passionate about this, and I'm, you know, as I continue to move towards retirement, I'm kind of going back into my advocacy, and I'll be doing more speaking and outreach until the day I take my last breath for the baby. So you have your pinwheels and your pins, and this symbolizes the joy and happiness that children deserve, to be safe and nurtured and warm and safe. And I just thank you so much, and just every day should be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Day. It is in our world. So, thank you. [applause]
Ready? All right. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Got it. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful speaker.
He made it.
13484-25.
A proclamation declaring Saturday, April 12th, 2025 to be 412 Thrive Day in Allegheny County, sponsored by Council Member Filiagi.
Good afternoon. Yes, I think that there's some subjects today with our proclamations that have a heavy, an element of heaviness to them. We have cancer and the child abuse, but I think the theme also here, I think we can take is resilience, right? That's the theme we're really taking from us, from this today, is the resilience of our community and the county and the people who volunteer within it. So I have the pleasure of being able to bestow this proclamation on 412 Thrive, and I'm going to give that right to you at the moment, and for another organization that gives us resilience and coping skills, right? This, breast cancer has touched my family. My Sir Pizza, big brother, who, if you read the article, it's a gentleman that's been with us for 40 years, so most of my life and his, and his wife has recently, was recently, went through breast cancer surgery, treatment, and is going through, and we're talking about connections and support systems. And so, as luck would have it and fortuitous that I get to present this proclamation, so I thank you for this gift. Whereas 412 Thrive is a Pittsburgh-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) positively impacting the lives of individuals who have had breast cancer or genetic mutations that lead to cancer. Known as Thrivers, or those who have been through breast cancer or have a genetic mutation that can lead to cancer in southwestern Pennsylvania, the group has been dedicated to serving those who have suffered and been affected by cancer and genetic mutations. And whereas, it was established in 2020 during the coronavirus pandemic by women who were missing that connection with people that they could talk with and work through similar shared experiences with others who are going through breast cancer. And whereas, the 412 Thrive strives to create a system that makes everyone feel secure and included by offering online and in-person support, monthly gatherings, educational workshops, wellness retreats, care packages, house cleaning, and meals when needed. The 412 Thrive organization is devoted to helping individuals do more than just survive, but help them thrive. I love that word. Whereas since the inception, 412 Thrive has provided over 450 care packages to those going through chemotherapy, radiation, and/or mastectomy or reconstruction surgery, and recently added hysterectomy care packages. Thrivers delivered meals, cleaned houses, and provided rides to appointments for those going through treatment, established social gatherings for Thrivers to gather and talk, leading to lasting friendships, and they created a Facebook page, which everybody loves that, or at least people my age and up, right, where Thrivers can communicate with each other, wishing them luck and goodwill on upcoming scans and surgeries. That connection is so important. Whereas, in the first year, 412 Thrive has hosted several in-person and virtual events and has grown from 11 Thrivers to over 800. That's incredible. That's a testament to how much we need these people like this. 412 Thrive serves individuals throughout southwestern Pennsylvania. Nearly 550 of over 860 Thrivers live in Allegheny County. And encourage everyone interested in joining or participating in events to learn more about this organization on the website. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilperson Suzanne Filiagi, along with all members of council, do hereby declare Saturday, April 12th, 2025 to be 412 Thrive Day in Allegheny County, and we commend and applaud and are thankful for the efforts of 412 Thrive, and we renew our commitment to fighting this disease, raising awareness, and supporting those affected by cancer. Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you very much for this proclamation.
Tell us who you are.
I'm so sorry. My name is Mary Claire Reynolds. I live in Mount Lebanon. I'm a lifelong Pittsburgher. Two years ago, in the summer of 2023, I was diagnosed with early-stage breast cancer, and two weeks later was subsequently diagnosed with the BRCA2 genetic mutation. A friend of mine had told me that I should join this Facebook group, Thrivers. I went on it one night when I was lying in bed and told my story, and overnight, when I woke up the next morning, I had four private messages from four people who live in Mount Lebanon, two of whom I knew had breast cancer, the other two of whom I did not, and I've gotten to know them all better. When I was scheduled to have my double hysterectomy, I registered with 412 Thrive, and one day, on my porch, a huge box and a bag was delivered to me, and I had a dozen wedge pillows and a care package with everything from lozenges and lip balm for my stay in the hospital to socks and a box of tea bags, cookies and crackers, and things for when I came home from the hospital, and a gift card for DoorDash. It was, I hadn't met any of these people in person at that time. It was just really life-changing. It's just a wonderful organization. I've started to do more volunteering with them. I did a table, a tabling event over the holidays in Mount Lebanon, and we received donations. We try and spread the word, and unfortunately, it's not a group that you really want to have to join, but once you're there, it's truly, it's a family. So we're very, very honored by this, and I'm very pleased to be here today to accept this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll get some pictures of the donors tomorrow to give to, I'm not exactly sure.
Oh, sure.
We're going to get pictures if you want.
Okay.
Sure. Sure.
Can you guys come to the right middle? There we go. Thank you. All right. Okay, ready? All right, ready? One, two, three. Gotcha.
Thank you so much.
13482-25.
A proclamation proclaiming April 7th through 13th, 2025 is National Public Health Week in Allegheny County, sponsored by Council Member Klein.
Okay. Well, today we mark National Public Health Week here in Allegheny County, and I wish that, with respect to public health, I wish that the backdrop would be very different. A friend of mine had told me that I should join this Facebook group, Thrivers. I went on it one night when I was lying in bed and told my story. And overnight, when I woke up the next morning, I had four private messages from four people who live in Mount Lebanon, two of whom I knew had breast cancer, the other two of whom I did not. And I've gotten to know them all better. When I was scheduled to have my double hysterectomy, I registered with 412 Thrive and one day on my porch, a huge box and a bag was delivered to me. And I had a dozen wedge pillows and a care package with everything from lozenges and lip balm for my stay in the hospital to socks and a box of tea bags, cookies and crackers, and things for when I came home from the hospital, and a gift card for DoorDash. It was I hadn't met any of these people in person at that time. It was just really life-changing. It's just a wonderful organization. I've started to do more volunteering with them. I did a table event, a tabling event over the holidays in Mount Lebanon, and we received donations. We try and spread the word. And unfortunately, it's not a group that you really want to have to join, but once you're there, it's truly, it's a family. So we're very, very honored by this, and I'm very pleased to be here today to accept this. Thank you.
There we go. All right. All right, ready? One, two, three. Gotcha.
A proclamation proclaiming April 7th through 13th, 2025, is National Public Health Week in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Klein.
Well, today we mark National Public Health Week here in Allegheny County. And I wish that with respect to public health, I wish that the backdrop would be very different than it is today. So just a couple of things. Today we mark National Public Health Week in Allegheny County. And I have to say that I wish that the esteem in which the American public health system has long been held was still prevalent today. But the current, the current regime in Washington has chosen to cast doubt on the efficacy of our public health system and has stirred distrust in large segments of our population. Today, we recognize what most people in this county view, and rightfully so, as a public asset. And we expect that under the leadership of Health Department Director Dr. Julia Van, that with the work and her leadership, our Health Department will certainly defy the doubters. So I do have a proclamation to present. You might want to sit down because it's rather elaborate. But I would also say that I think it's, you know, it is a really instructive document. So whereas in April, the nation celebrates National Public Health Week to recognize the important role that health professionals play in creating a brighter tomorrow. And this year's theme, it starts here, highlights the importance of making a difference in our home, our community, and in our county. And really, this might be the only thing we have going for us at this point. We've got to do it here. Whereas, whereas this is the 30th anniversary of celebrating National Public Health Week, and in the past 30 years, significant strides have been made in public health, including the following public health successes. First, deaths due to HIV/AIDS, which peaked in 1994 at 49,095 AIDS-related deaths that year in the U.S. They have dropped significantly with antiretroviral therapy ensuring most people with HIV can live normal lifespans and prevention tools like PR-Ep significantly reduce transmission. Secondly, smoking rates, which were as high as 25.5% among U.S. adults in 1994, have now fallen to 11.4% due to comprehensive smoke-free policies, public awareness campaigns, and taxation of tobacco products. Third, childhood mortality, which was at a rate of 13.8 deaths per 1,000 live births in 1994, has now fallen to 5.4% 5.4 deaths per 1,000 live births due to vaccines, sorry, vaccines, better healthcare access, and nutrition. Fourth, mental health awareness and treatment. With 40% of people with mental health conditions being untreated in 1994, we have progressed with increased awareness, parity laws, and integration into primary care, which have expanded access to mental health services and reduced treatment gaps. Fifth, lead poisoning. With 4.4% of U.S. children having elevated blood lead levels in 1994, that has now fallen to 0.5% due to policies banning leaded gas and reducing lead in paint pipes and water systems, something that we have embraced in a significant way in this county. Sixth, health impacts of climate change, such as rising heat-related deaths, were underrecognized in 1994 but are now being mitigated by actions such as the public health campaigns, local adaptation plans, including cooling centers and other preparedness plans to protect the public from extreme weather, wildfires, and other regional threats and global frameworks like the Paris Agreement, which we are no longer a part of. And seven, pandemic preparedness, which was in its infancy in 1994, has now grown, especially after the COVID-19 pandemic, sparing significant advancement of mRNA technology, global vaccine deployment, and increased investments in infrastructure, stockpiles, and global surveillance, all of which must be sustained. And whereas racial and ethnic minority populations in the United States continue to experience disparities in the burden of illness and death as compared with the entire population of the U.S. And whereas a person's health status can differ dramatically by zip code due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community context, access to healthy food, access to education, and access to healthcare. And whereas public health organizations use National Public Health Week to educate public policymakers, public health professionals, and the public on issues that are important to improving the health of the people of the United States. And whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats ranging from infectious disease outbreaks to natural disaster preparedness. And whereas efforts to adequately support public health and the prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness into a health system focused on preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. And whereas since 1957, the Allegheny County Health Department has worked to ensure all residents, particularly the most vulnerable, that they have the opportunity to lead a healthy life, empowered communities with tools, knowledge, and resources to make a difference, addressing public health challenges, ensuring access to vital health services, and encouraging individuals to take charge of their health by promoting prevention and health equity in the community. And whereas the Allegheny County Health Department is committed to ensuring that residents are healthy from the start, and its extensive and effective collaboration among a wide range of public and private sector partners will help Allegheny County's next generation be healthier than the ones before. Now therefore be it, now therefore be it resolved that I, Allegheny County Councilmember Paul Klein, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025, as National Public Health Week in Allegheny County, and call upon the people of Allegheny County to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to recognize the contribution of public health in improving the health of the people of our state and achieving health equity, as the theme states. It starts here. So, thank you very much, Dr. Van.
Thank you so much, councilmembers, and thank you so much, Councilmember Klein, for the proclamation. I know it was a lot, but that's what we do in public health. We do a lot. I'm Julia Van. I'm the Public Health Director, and it's really an honor to be here tonight to accept the proclamation on behalf of our team at the Allegheny County Health Department, who are working tirelessly every day out in the community to provide services, to make sure that we're making connection, that we're building partnerships. And I'm really excited to be here. I'm excited to work with all of you and all of our partners to making sure that we're doing the right thing through the Health Department. So I'm going to keep it short. We had a long proclamation. I'm excited to be here and thank you for this acknowledgement of National Public Health Week. Thank you so much.
Ready? Okay, one, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
13485-25.
A proclamation recognizing the 2024-2025 Shartiers Valley Boys Basketball Team for winning the WPIAL Championship, sponsored by Councilmember Katina.
13486-25.
A proclamation recognizing community life upon the occasion of its 25th anniversary, sponsored by Councilmember Macy.
13487-25.
A proclamation celebrating Gloria Jones upon the occasion of her 80th birthday, sponsored by Councilmember Walton.
13488-25.
A proclamation declaring April 5th, 2025, as happy days in Allegheny County and recognizing their unforgettable cast, sponsored by Councilmember Katina and all other members of council.
13489-25.
A proclamation recognizing Henry Joseph Ruskin on his project and the Eagle Scout Award, sponsored by Councilmember Grisbeck.
13490-25.
A proclamation recognizing Judge Mary Jane Bowes on being the recipient of the 2025 Judge Robert E. Dower Award, sponsored by Councilmember Grisbeck.
13491-25.
A proclamation recognizing Judge Robert J. Colville upon being the recipient of the 2025 Judge James R. McGregor Award, sponsored by Councilmember Bitkowski.
I don't believe we have any public comment on any agenda items this evening.
Correct.
Okay. Peril of minutes. 13492-25.
A motion to approve the minutes of the March 11th, 2025 Regular Meeting of Council.
Making a motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments. All the appointments being presented this evening are referred to the Committee on Appointment Review. If there are no objections, I'd like the clerk to read them all at this time. Hearing none, go ahead.
The first of them is 13476-25. That's approving the appointment of the Honorable President of Allegheny County Council, Patrick J. Katina, of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority for term effective through December 31st, 2029, sponsored by the Chief Executive. The remaining appointments being presented are all to the Community College of Allegheny County Board of Trustees, all with a term effective through April 22nd, 2031, all sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13477-25 is the reappointment of the Honorable Senator Jay Costa Jr. 13478-25 is the reappointment of Elizabeth Fishback. 13479-25 is the reappointment of Guillermo Vasquez. 13480 is the appointment of Dora Lee E. Brooks.
Unfinished Business, the Committee on Appointment Review for the second reading. If there are no objections, I'd like to do a single vote to approve all of the appointments appearing under unfinished business this evening. Anyone object? Hearing none. I'd like the clerk to read to read all the unfinished business appointments this time.
All of the appointments tonight are to the Mental Health Intellectual Disability Advisory Board for term effective, the terms are different. All are sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13419-25 is the appointment of Dr. Julia Van. 13420-25 is the appointment of Vanessa Dodd. Those two expire on March 25th, 2027. 13421-25 is the appointment of Deborah Glover-Joswiak. 13423-25 is the appointment of Dr. Danisha Slider. 13424-25 is the appointment of Emparessis Dice. 13425-25 is the appointment of David Forsyth. 13426-25 is the appointment of Kirsten Param. 13427-25 is the appointment of Ayesha Carter. 13428-25 is the appointment of Keneta Foltz. 13429-25 is the appointment of Rachel Flinner. And 13430-25 is the appointment of Ginevra Jones.
Councilmember Nakari Chapkas.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on April 3rd, 2025, and affirmatively recommended all of these appointments, and I would like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Does anyone object to a voice vote? Jared, all those, all the, I'm sorry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I will now move on to liaison reports. Any liaison reports this evening? Go ahead, Councilman Macy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I've been serving in the Mon Valley for 19 years, but beyond my elected position, I did a lot of other things. But I did a, and along with some help and some research, did a study. And it's, to the most part, on mental, intellectual health, housing security, food insecurity, air quality, community emergency services at our police departments, and caring for the aged loved ones. Now, this was an in-the-street look. This wasn't with doctors and professors. This is about what I see and what I believe is going on in the Mon Valley. And what I would like to do is I would like a copy of my report, which we can use with all the other reports on the Mon Valley, because they're different. Some reports go back to studies from 2008. Things have changed. And I thought this would be appropriate as I leave county council to give my assessment and for the record. And I believe that she has one. Yeah. With the, is that okay with the rest of you all?
Yeah.
Okay. And outside of that, we still need firefighters, volunteer firefighters everywhere, all the communities in Allegheny County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? New business ordinances and resolutions. 13494-25.
An ordinance of the Council of the County of Allegheny ratifying revisions to the Allegheny County Health Department rules and regulations, Article 19, medical service fees, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
That will go to Health and Human Services. New business motions. 13495-25.
A motion of the Council of Allegheny County urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to pass House Bill 453, recognizing the importance of emergency call-takers, dispatchers, and supervisors by adding these individuals to the definition of emergency responders with all deliberate speed, sponsored by Councilmember Katina. May please be added as a co-sponsor to that.
Me as well, please.
Me too.
Said anybody not wish to be added.
Is it everyone?
Yep.
Okay. Since everyone's a co-sponsor, obviously, I'd like to move forward with voting on this motion tonight. So Councilmember Nakari Chapkas, since you're the head of public safety, would you like to make that motion?
I would like to make that motion. Thank you.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for that. At this point, we'll have notification of contracts. 13493-25.
A communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of March, 2025.
Is there a motion to receive and file?
Receive and file.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We won't have public comment on general items. Go ahead, Jared.
We have several. First up is John Kestowitz.
John Kestowitz, 828 Jancy Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15206. Updates on our work regarding our agenda initiative to reinstate interventions for safety and clinical assessments at our jail. There is a change in what we will be presenting to you using the Agenda Initiative regarding the interventions we are requesting to be reinstated. OC spray, or commonly known as pepper spray, is being introduced as a third intervention you will have the opportunity to vote on. According to our correctional officer, Union President, Warden Wingard, at a meeting with his correctional officers, said that he would like to see every employee at our jail carry a pepper spray canister to be used in emergent situations for safety and to prevent injury. The public, especially women, use pepper spray canisters for protection and safety. The Department of Justice provides very strict guidelines in how pepper spray will be used, which you will become familiar with. If the use of pepper spray becomes law, Warden Wingard will institute policies regarding its limited use and provide training to his staff. We will provide three different petitions with the necessary signatures, so you will have the opportunity to vote independently on each of the three interventions: the restraint chair, leg shackles for hospital runs, and the pepper spray. We are processing requests from some of you to meet with our correctional officers in a Zoom. We will be providing to you position papers on each of the interventions and on the question of why these interventions are so important to our office. are so important to our officers and their families. The papers will be filled with references from experts in the field, statistics, and narratives from both ACJ correctional officers and ACJ healthcare staff, as well as from spouses of correctional officers. We have decided to create these papers as separate entities, each paper being limited in length, to give you opportunities to read the papers more at your leisure. We will also provide to a statement regarding why the Union believes that voters did not know what they were voting for regarding the three interventions, citing as examples the nebulous ballot question and the very vague petition statement. Lastly, Bethany has been saying that our warden, our president of the Jail Oversight Board, and different correctional officers are against the instituting of the restraint chair. Though I respect Bethany for much of what she stands for and what she has done, this is not what's going on. Deputy Warden Estock told me after the last J O B meeting that he and the warden are remaining neutral on this question of reinstating the chair, as is Judge Abashevich. Thank you.
Next up is Edward Ren.
Okay, my name's Ed Ren, M.D. of Pittsburgh. I'm here again to speak in favor of the resolution to increase permit fees on potentially polluting facilities in order to cover costs incurred by the Allegheny County Health Department, which, of course, Dr. Van is the head. Please do not undermine it by resorting to technicalities. And at least two-thirds vote in favor would improve the health of all of our citizens and the overall health of our county's economy and employment. What bothers me most is that there's been little, if any, opportunity to learn about members' thoughts prior to it eventually coming up for a vote. If I am perhaps wrong in my opinion, I'd appreciate the benefit of hearing well-reasoned counterarguments. My main ask today is the opportunity to meet with you, Mr. Embrasia, I think you're on the phone, as one of my at-large council members. I have emailed you, left a phone message via Mr. Varhola, and contacted your campaign, so I hope that we'll have a chance to meet. Regardless of your opinion on this resolution, I'm hopeful that you are similar to Senator John Heinz, County Executive Jim Roddy, Governor Tom Ridge, for whom the Tom Ridge Environmental Center in Erie is named, and Mark DeSantis. Although I'm a registered Democrat, I am open to learning more about Bob Dodaro. As Governor Ridge wrote in The Atlantic in 2020, Republicans would do well to support reasonable environmental policy, as I expect from Democrats, but I'm sometimes disappointed. Sadly, there are two Democrats on this council who have clear conflicts of interest due to their direct ties to U.S. Steel and the United Steelworkers. We will see where their loyalties lie. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next up is Stephen Mazza.
Next.
Taya Paris.
Next.
Patrick Campbell.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Campbell, the Executive Director of the Group Against Smog and Pollution. I'm here today again to demand action on Allegheny County Health Department's proposed fee schedule changes. ACHD's straightforward plan to properly fund the air quality program through fee adjustments on operators hasn't been discussed by this full council, even though it's been on your plate since June of 2024. Meanwhile, your constituents have come out in droves, meeting after meeting, imploring you to take action, and you are failing them. Again, this isn't some abstract debate about economics. This is about basic functionality. Right now, dedicated professionals, ACHD inspectors, engineers, attorneys, and more, are performing crucial tasks like modeling local air quality, assessing health risks, and processing permits for major industrial facilities. And to be clear, if you haven't seen it, this is what a Title V permit looks like. I printed it double-sided, so you get a sense of the scope of these things. They are incredibly complex. There are 23 sources in Allegheny County that require a Title V operating permit, and ACHD works diligently on all of these. These are hundreds of pages and take months to complete at best. The Clean Air Act is clear. Allegheny County must have the resources and personnel to effectively manage these essential services, and that means charging fees that cover the cost to administer its Title V program. This isn't about punishment. This isn't punitive. It's administrative. It's about companies paying for the myriad services ACHD staff provides to ensure their permits are complete and they can continue to do business in Allegheny County, businesses that employ thousands of your constituents. It's simple budgeting. The Air Pollution Advisory Committee understood this. The Board of Health understood this. Environmental advocates, community leaders, and, most importantly, the very people you represent understood this. The proposal moved swiftly through the established channels until it reached this council. Now, it's again languishing in committee despite all of the pleas, to move it to the agenda for a discussion and possible vote. And the real-world consequences of this inaction is depriving our most vulnerable communities of nearly a half a million dollars from the Clean Air Fund. Money that should be going directly to community-led projects to improve public health will instead be diverted to cover the very administrative cost this fee increase was meant to address. So, think about that. The air dispersion models, the risk assessments, the permit reviews performed on behalf of industry, that's what your inaction is forcing ACHD to pay for out of community funds. So, there should be no understanding that your delay
Thank you.
is providing tangible harm.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Jacob Poole.
He's not here.
Angelo Toronto.
Not here.
Karen Sloan.
Not, she's here.
I want to thank the previous speaker for their thoughtful eloquence of so much data and reasoned arguments. My papers say mom, 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 and mom, mom, mom for my three pages of my speech. So, dear, a different perspective. Dear County Council members, my daughter and I are so grateful for our recent experience coming to speak here, so much so that we couldn't pass up coming back again to speak up for permit fee increases in order to fully fund the county air quality program. Your deep kindness and encouragement through both applause when my daughter had finished her speech, and then multiple county council members coming up to go out of their way to talk with her one-on-one just after the meeting ended. You poured so much positive energy and confidence into this little one. You've made a core memory for her, one that will make a big difference for her flourishing as she continues to grow and develop in the years ahead. Thank you. Thank you. And your heart of service for our region as a county council member and for all the people of Allegheny County to flourish is very much appreciated. Now, speaking of county assets, as with past summers, our family is looking forward to fun adventures we will have in county parks, especially the swimming pools. But a recent change for our family, however, is having kids who are old enough that we aren't so exhausted by their day-to-day care needs. They're getting bigger. And so, with this extra energy and time, we've been thinking and praying about some of the ways our family might contribute to helping make the lives of families in our community better, to help so many more families who are raising children, and everyone else who wants to invest in future generations, like those who lead nearby community garden programs, welcoming us to volunteer sessions as a family. All of this is part of our dreams of a region that is flourishing because its children are flourishing. And a most basic element for growing healthy kids is clean air. Air is more basic than locally grown vegetables. We need clean air more than we need access to swimming pools. Clean air is not something in the category of extra nice if there's funds. Now, a few months ago, on New Year's Eve, as my daughter and I were helping downtown with an annual giant puppet parade on New Year's Eve, my husband was actually with her dying pap in the hospital, whose severe lung scarring and decay could not even be helped by high-flow oxygen at that point. Air quality matters. When we struggle to breathe, we struggle to live. Now, you county council members, you have this amazing opportunity, this very practical step, that only you can do in securing a more flourishing future for all of us. Approve the Allegheny County Health Department proposal for permit fee increases. For a fully funded county air quality program is needed for the health of our region, for our children to have a hope and a future flourishing here in Allegheny County. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
With several more.
Who's next?
We got, we got.
Oh, back. I didn't turn it over. Okay.
Mel Carlton is next.
Hi, County Council. I wonder if you have a favorite animal you like to watch. I love the bunny that I can see hopping through my yard in my neighborhood. And when a bunny is sitting still, I can be very quiet. I like to sit as close as I can and just watch the bunny. It's fun to be outside in nature. I also love doing math problems. I even do lots of math problems at home, sometimes with my mom's help. And she helps me with science experiments, too. A few weeks ago, I was part of my first school science fair, and I won first place for my age group. There are so many great colleges near us that I hope I can, I am able to go to some, to college here someday, and that someday I will be a wife and a mom of kids living here. There are so many possibilities for a kid growing up in this area. What the, what about the kid you know best and the most and love the most? Do you ever get to watch animals with them, dream with them about their future possibilities? Will you think about the opportunity you have right now to make our air cleaner for the kids you love, to fully fund the Clean Air Program for the kids of, for the futures of all kids, and cleaner air for animals, too? All kids need grown-ups to protect air for everyone. Can you please vote yes for the air quality program funds? Thank you.
Next up is Kat Marquez.
Good evening. My name is Kat Marquez. I am the Allegheny County Civic Engagement Mobilizer with Penn Future. Penn Future is a member-supported statewide environmental advocacy organization predicting Pennsylvania's clean air, clean water, and climate. I'm also a resident of Allegheny County, specifically East Liberty District 10, represented by Councilmember Dewitt Walton. I aim to express mine and Penn Future's support for the proposed air quality permit fee increase, how this increase is required by state and federal law, and how it fulfills your duties as trustees under the Environmental Rights Amendment. As someone who has developed asthma, I have felt the bad air quality impact my lungs the longer I've been here. In just four years, it has been difficult for me to go outside for as long as I'd like to. I like to go on walks, bike rides, and play basketball, though I'm forced to constantly wear a mask just to protect myself, as well as keep an asthma inhaler on me at all times. Just this last week, I had to sit on a basketball scrimmage after 20 minutes of playing due to the bad air quality impacting my breathing. I know I'm not the only one, as Allegheny County residents have spoken up, about how the poor air quality has impacted their lives. I'd like to recognize the numerous community members who have written letters, signed petitions, made phone calls, and even made public comments at county council meetings. Their voices show the very real consequences of an underfunded Allegheny County air quality program. We at Penn Future ask you to fully fund the air quality program simply by increasing the existing air quality permit fees to adequately cover the cost of administering the permits. All county council members need to fulfill their duties as a representatives and support the air quality permit fee increase. Not only is this an easy and simple action that can protect your constituents' health, but also one that can protect the environment. As the next county council meeting lands on Earth Day, Tuesday, April 22nd, I must remind you that you are in a position to do something about to care for the earth, the land we stand on, and the air we breathe. Thank you to the county council members who already support this proposal. And thank you to the community members who have repeatedly shown and spoken up in favor of the air permit fee increase. All of your hard work and dedication to improving the livelihood of Allegheny County and the environment is what inspires me every day. Thank you.
Jay Walker.
My name is Jay Ting Walker, and I'm a community organizer with the Clean Air Council. I'm here to talk about our county's need to increase air permit fees, air quality permit fees. The corresponding fee schedule put forward by the Allegheny County Health Department, ACHD, are not arbitrary. The Title V permit fees come directly from the calculated cost of implementing the Title V enforcement program. The increases were recommended by the Environmental Protection Agency in their latest audit of our county's Title V permit program. In that audit, in the conclusions section, under subsection C, EPA recommends that ACHD not only, quote, "increase permit engineers and administrative staffing levels to a level sufficient for current workloads," unquote, but that they also, quote, "ensure collected fees are sufficient to fund the Title V program," unquote. Through the legislation, through this legislation, ACHD is following both of these recommendations. In addition, the fee schedule went through a rigorous Board of Health process, including a public hearing where industry, along with dozens of community members, testified. Cleaner Council has engaged in numerous battles over recent years to make sure that the county's Clean Air Fund goes to improving health in the community. The Council has fought against multiple attempts to raid the fund to shore up county budgets. The fund was also designed to allow the Health Department to take a little bit every year to help fund department operations. Under new ACH Director, Dr. Van, the Cleaner Fund is finally being dispersed for its intended purpose. We applaud the department for getting the funds out to the community. Unfortunately, this has also had the unintended result of decreasing the annual withdrawal, contributing to ACHD's budget shortfall. Increasing the air permit fees will help to address the unintended effect of the county being punished for doing the right thing with our county's Clean Air Fund. Over the years, I've been able to engage with numerous staff people at ACHD. The Council has also worked closely with Health Department attorneys to ensure that polluters are held accountable for flagrant violations of the law. Health Department staff work very hard with limited resources and want to see our existing regulations properly enforced. Vote yes to the increased fee schedule so that the department can have the resources that it needs to make sure industry is complying with the law. Councilperson Klein referenced the current regime in Washington earlier in this meeting. We're currently watching our federal government be gutted right before our eyes. This isn't a time to shy away from governance, due to the chilling effect we all feel we're out of fear. This air permit fee increase is an easy way to address federal shortcomings without adding a cent to the tax burden carried by Allegheny County taxpayers. Vote yes to the common-sense air quality permit fee increase recommended by the Health Department and EPA. Doing so will help to ensure the Clean Air Fund continues to be used appropriately, while also making sure that our county doesn't suffer because of a change in national leadership. Thank you.
Matt Nemeth.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Nemeth, and I'm a lifelong resident of Allegheny County. Over the past year, I have moved into the city and pretty quickly noticed a decrease in the air quality since moving from the suburbs in the North Hills. I'm here to give public comment, to ask for the county council to vote on increasing the air quality permit fees. Over the past several years, I've attended over a dozen Board of Health and County Council meetings, and I've noticed that it always seems like a near constant battle for us to get action on protecting our health when it comes to air quality. I'm not sure why this is, but I have noticed that also this current battle to get an increase in air permit fees has been going on for a while, and that still it is not ready to go up for a vote among general council. So, directly, I would like to ask that go up for a vote among general council. So, directly, I would like to ask that the, that the Human and Health Services Committee, which is chaired by Paul Klein, vote, make a vote on passing this air permit fees, so it can come up to a vote on council. I'm not sure what the delay is going on with this. People's lives are on the lines, and a lot of people have already given comment and expressed their interest in this passing. So please, take action on it now. Thank you.
Last up is Ella Gerudo. Apparently not. That's it.